Long time no see.
Good evening. We would like to call the Wednesday, February 14 Richmond City School Board Budget Work Session to Order. Madam Clerk?
Will the Board members who are present please respond? Ms. Dorr?
Here.
Mr. Barlow? Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Ms. Cosby?
Here.
Mrs. Burke?
Here.
Ms. Owen?
Here.
Dr. Sapini?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Do you have a quorum, Madam Chair? We do have our interpreter here this evening.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public information. I have one speaker be signed up in advance. Madam Chair, what is your pleasure?
Please allow them to come forward. If you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you have five minutes. So as you come forward, state your name and sign in.
Elizabeth Waite.
Good evening. I'm here representing my good friend, Ms. Kaitlyn Rollins at the RCEEA, who was not able to attend tonight due to a prior engagement. I'm going to read a statement she prepared for the occasion. "My name is Kaitlyn Rollins and I am a teacher at Richmond Career Education and Employment Academy and have been for the past three years. I am the money management and reading teacher for the academy and work with every student who attends our school. As you know, our grant ends this year and moving into the 2018-2019 school year has its uncertainties. Richmond has the potential to be an up-and-coming district. There are many people, classrooms, and schools that Virginia can admire. Richmond Career Education Employment Academy is a school that has led the way to innovation and excellence. We are a model of school partnerships with local businesses and corporations to allow students the opportunity to succeed. Internships and jobs have been provided to our students by several businesses, which have helped to spur economic growth by employing someone from the community, someone who otherwise would be unable to work due to their disability. Without the RCEEA, our students would be sitting in classrooms with limited access to these opportunities and supports. While all low-incidence special education teachers work hard to provide the best education for their students, oftentimes they are overlooked by their school and hidden away in dead-end hallways. Our school strives to make sure each and every student will be an active member of their community and will be competitively employed. While we are a small school, our budget does not reflect the actual breakdown of what we spend. RCEEA is a Title I school and receives funding as such. The proposed budget of $700,000 reflects the cost of retirement and salaries of the staff of the academy. While eliminating the school may seem to be the right decision in order to trim the budget, about 90% of our funding goes to salary. And if our school were to close, teachers and staff would be moved to other schools, thus simply shifting the money from one school to another, providing little to no savings." The current school year began with the construction of new facilities to accommodate the needs of our students, including a pay lab, speech, and OT room, full kitchen, and sensory room. If the school were to close, these expenses would have been for nothing, as the classrooms would be left empty. "The district may not know us, but teachers know us. Every time we have an outing to the Special Olympics or go on a community-based instructional trip, we are met by fellow teachers who hope we have an opening for one of their students who would excel, given the right environment. And while we hope to expand our school and be able to adequately provide job experience for each and every student who needs it, we are now faced with the real possibility of being shut down in a cost-saving effort that makes little sense in the overall picture. Cutting our funding will only eliminate the business partnerships we have, send students back to their home schools where they often feel they do not belong or are not accepted as valuable members of the community."
Thirty seconds.
"We are a haven for students who can and will succeed at life, given the right supports offered by our program. We, Richmond City, can be an example to other districts, not only across Virginia, but to other states, as we support this model of functional curriculum and vocational training. Do not make this mistake. Please consider supporting our school and the future of our students by keeping our school open. Thank you."
Thank you. If we have any other members in the audience at this time, please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Valerie Schwartz, a teacher from Mary Mumford and the city representative for the Yale National Initiative. I am here tonight to speak to you about the Yale National Initiative, a professional development program and model. There's been a lot of talk about professional development for teachers, and it generally is not positive. This is not only true for Richmond. I hear it from teachers across the country, but I don't hear it when teachers are speaking about the Yale National Initiative. This program is designed to strengthen teaching in public schools. It focuses on improving teachers' content knowledge in the subjects that they teach. At Yale, K-12 teachers from high-need school districts are together in a seminar with a professor. The professor brings the expertise in the content knowledge, or subject, and the teachers bring the expertise in the pedagogy, or teaching. Through reading, research, discussion, and collaboration, each teacher creates a research-based curriculum unit aligned to the SOLs designed for their students. The program also provides an opportunity for teacher leadership without leaving the classroom. Locally in Richmond, we have been working with VCU to establish a local teachers institute so many more RPS teachers can participate. This program offers so much more than just developing a curriculum unit. The program has nearly doubled the retention rate for teachers in New Haven, a district similar to Richmond. My principal attended many years ago and couldn't believe how hard the program was and how excited and positive the teachers were about it. The professors from VCU and universities around the country see the value in the program and the benefit of connecting K-12 with higher education. Twenty professors from VCU have participated and want to have a local teachers institute. As a teacher, it is really challenging. It is a project that spans months with reading, research, writing, and grappling with such high-level knowledge to figure out how to present it to students in a way that they can understand. Teachers described the program as empowering, energizing, and transformative. For the past two years, students have presented at Yale about their experiences with the curriculum units and validated the work with their powerful words. A former George Wood student spoke about the curriculum unit focused on Hillside Court and how, as a result, she realized she wanted to go to college. She is currently a sophomore at Christopher Newport. Two Navajo middle schoolers-
Thirty seconds.
-shared their experiences with the Yale Science Unit, and the room erupted in applause and brought some to tears. An immigrant high school student from San Jose shared his experience, and short documentary about his immigration experience, his film received recognition in Washington, DC. I urge you to please support the funding for the Yale National Initiative so Richmond can establish a local teachers institute to benefit our teachers and, most importantly, our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that we have no one else to come at this time, this concludes our public information period. Next item.
Next item is item three, your budgetary items, 3.01. Discuss the superintendent's FY19 estimated needs in the 2018-2022 CIP budgets.
Mr. Myers, before you get started, just want to remind Board members and the public, this is our third work session that we have had thus far. When looking at the calendar, we're supposed to submit the school board's approved budget on the 23rd of this month to the mayor. Our next board meeting is the 20th, next Tuesday, not Monday because of the holiday, but next Tuesday. So if the board so desired to add an additional work session to approve the budget for order 23rd, possibly, we could possibly do that. What is the board's pleasure? Ms. Owen?
Well, the 19th is not a holiday anymore. Maybe we could have a work session on the 19th and a board session on the 20th and our board meeting on the 20th.
So the 19th is not a school holiday anymore?
Right.
I keep forgetting because my kids have graduated. I get on them. What is the board's pleasure? Ms. Gibson?
So the deadline is the 23rd to get it to the mayor. I'm just curious, what was the deadline? Is that the same as the deadline last year?
The board voted to ask the mayor to push it back a week, so I think we delivered it to the mayor on the 3rd of March, if I remember correctly.
Ms. Young?
I would concur with Ms. Owen's recommendation. I think that makes sense.
Okay. So have another work session on the 19th and be prepared to vote at our regular board meeting on the 20th?
Can you live with that, Mr. Myers?
Absolutely, yes ma'am.
So, Mr. Myers, you could accommodate?
We can, yes.
So 6:00 PM or earlier? 6:00 PM? Okay.
Madam Chair, would that be in City Hall or another location?
Yes.
City Hall, thank you.
And, Mr. Myers, before you start, I apologize. Let the record reflect you've been joined by Mr. Barlow.
So the 19th it is at 6:00 PM?
City.
City Hall, 17th floor. And I would encourage the public to join us at this budget work session.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. I will ask for the board's collective decision about staying where you are and working from the tables. The drop-down screen will be behind you. We have, in your folders, we have all the information from every meeting, but especially the information we'll work through tonight. So you certainly can stay there and work from the tables, or you, as you did, you cannot can come down front and we'll drop the screen. We still drop the screen anyway for the folks in the audience. I look to the board for your guidance.
What's the pleasure? Move down or to stay up here?
I like to move down.
Yes, ma'am, I'll go you. Go down? Okay.
Yeah, especially since I can't get online, so I can't see it.
What is the board's pleasure? I mean, I'm here and-
Sit down.
Soft seat. Okay.
I like the soft seats.
Do we have microphones that we, okay, so we can, we'll be able to communicate and the audience could hear us if we move down?
Madam Chair, members of the board, you may want to bring this folder with you. Would have been hard to see you guys with this screen. Are we ready to get started? Great. Did, you don't have to have this. Did everyone bring this set of information? We will have this on the screen. What I did want to do is to tell you how this folder is laid out tonight. There are dividers in this folder, and only this first set of information that we're going to put up on the screen right now, this is really the only information we're going to talk about. Everything else that's in here, these are copies of the last four nights that we talked about the budget, so we can go back and reference old information or previous information if we need to, and we have all of this information electronically, we can put it up on the screen. So there are seven files that I'd like to talk about, and then I'd like to go back and have some detailed discussion. The first one you'll see is on the screen and is the first page in your folder, and these are the items that are currently in the proposed budget. So this was the budget that was introduced on January the 16th, and these are the items that are in there. The reason I want to start here is at some point, I would assume by majority vote, the board will determine if these items would remain in the school board approved budget or they'd be removed. So I won't spend a whole lot of time. There was a 2% increase for all eligible employees, in Richmond substantially, that's everyone. The 4% healthcare increase, that is by contract, that contract is in place. The state has proposed, the governor has proposed a slight reduction in the VRS rate. There are four ESL teachers that we are required to add. Certainly, we can realign, and we'll talk about that in just a second, to meet our standards of quality requirement. At this moment, there are nine support positions. Again, we'll talk about these a little later. Ten gifted positions that are also a state requirement. Through our work with our position file, we have scrubbed the equivalent of 18 positions that do not affect instruction out of the budget. So those 23 positions would cost a net of $500,000. We were proposing a $50 increase currently to allocation, and that information is in your packet tonight. There's an allocation for the schools based on $100 per student and another $100 for every exceptional education student. This would increase that by $50, total of a million. And then these items on the bottom are current budgetary items, things that are already, that we are already paying in the budget or we have committed to pay. I will walk through those for a moment. We are spending a million and a half dollars more on substitute teachers than we currently have in the budget. Because of the change with our athletic trainers, we will spend $300,000 more than we have in the budget. We have an influx of special education students that require individual nursing. The transfers for the total of 800, you'll see Patrick Henry by contract with them, they have an increase in students, so that's another $115,000. The program that was spoken about earlier, we are losing the pass-through state funding for us to continue. That program would cost an additional $350,000 of local dollars. Code RBA is proposed to add the five positions at $50,000, and we have found out the tuition increase. These are no additional slots, said Maggie Walker in Appomattox. This is just their increase for the tuition for next year. And finally, we have the opportunity, the state has increased our early reading intervention program funding, but it would require an additional match. Give or take, it's about 50/50. We'd get about $200,000 more dollars from the state. To get that money, we'd match $175,000. In our current workers' comp claim payments, that budget needs to go up $400,000. Those are the things that are in the budget as we speak. At some point, you will decide, do you want to keep these things? For example, do you want to eliminate the raise? We would take that out. And then in addition to that, everything else in this first set, these are going to be budget priorities that you've submitted. Some of them we've discussed, some of them we haven't, and we'd like to start working through those tonight with the goal, of course, of working through all of these. We have added a work session now for next Monday, so we've got a little bit of time that we can work through tonight and also on Monday. But clearly, the goal of reaching consensus about what will be included in your budget that's going to go to the mayor and what will not. So that's our goal for tonight and now for Monday night. Ideally, if we could get as far along the process tonight as possible, that would take some of the stress off of Monday. Okay, so what else is in your packet? And I'm going to ask Ms. Braga if she'll walk through this. You'll see the very first page at the very top, it says, "These are board instructional priorities that we have previously reviewed." You will remember these. These were our first work session. It says, "Full-time nurse at every school." That would be 12 nurses. We have two pages of these, so we'll come back to this in a moment. We're not voting on any of this right now. So two pages of this. The next set, these are going to be instructional board priorities that we still need to review. So we have some of those. We've priced as many of those as we could. If you'll see that the blocked out, the blacked-out boxes on the right, it means that at this moment, these are probably not budgetary considerations. It doesn't mean they aren't important. Professional development, for example, is extremely important, but it's probably not a budgetary item for right now because of the work that's ahead of us over the next 100 days to six months. So that's probably not an item that you include as a budgetary item because the work hasn't quite been done yet. There's work to be done. The next set of information we'll review, this is the first of two District Four proposals. This is a cost-neutral proposal, and this is a summary on the front, and the details behind this are also included. The next set of information will be a second realignment proposal from District Four, and this talks about a 21st century facilities plan. Again, this is a summary page, the details are behind this. And then the last items that we have in this set of documents for discussion, we have isolated the transportation items that we'd like to talk about. Mr. Krantz and Mr. Miles are here tonight to talk about these items. And then the last set, these are facility items, and we broke these out because we have, as you all know, a comprehensive facilities plan that not only includes the $150 million, which is a subset of the 800 million construction plan, but also a very comprehensive maintenance plan. You may remember it's over $100 million in addition to the $225 million. We'll come back to that. So all of these items are included in some fashion in the facilities plan, maybe not in the timeline that we'd like to get to them. So that's the way the information has been organized for this evening. What I'd like to do, if it pleases the board, I'd like to go back and start talking through the instructional priorities that we have not reviewed yet, unless somebody would like to start in a different place.
Clerk, are the staffing, the estimates here, are the staffing dollars, do they include benefits?
They do.
Or is that just salary?
They include benefits. And thank you for asking that question. When we work through some of these, you'll see that these are, for example, a pilot where we said two counselors at two high schools, two counselors at, just as an example. So those are, that is part of the assumption that we made to try to put funding with this. But thank you.
If I could go back to the first page?
Yes, ma'am.
Where you have ESL support staff, now that ESL, is that in classroom? Or does that include our bilingual administrator staff?
It would. These would include both parent liaisons and interpreters, and those are included. I went back and looked. When we get to the vote of deciding what we want to put in, I went back based on what you said, and I did see that Rod Rock had asked for two ESL teachers, so I added one. But I actually counted again the nine support positions. So except for one more ESL teaching position, I think this is mirroring what the schools have asked for. Now, what exactly we're going to ask those support people to do would still be ahead. The folks that would be in a more of a secretarial capacity kind in the front office, those folks are budgeted at $45,000, which is what we pay a school secretary. That includes benefits. And the folks that would be more of just an interpreter are budgeted at $35,000. That's what's in our pay plan at this moment. We may decide that that is not enough money to entice people to come work in our schools, and that would be something we would need to think about in our pay plan. But that's what's in the pay plan today.
So this does include additional counselors who are bilingual? That was one of the requests, I know they came from several of us.
It does not, but it is in your priorities for you to vote on.
Right, okay.
It wasn't in your original, in the original proposed budget, but it's in the priorities to vote on. Yes, ma'am?
Just to make sure that I'm clear. So for ESL teaching positions, you said really, based on the request, it's really one additional, sort of, five?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
So if it pleases, if it pleases the board, we'll start working through the initiatives, the priorities that we have not discussed to this point, knowing we're going to come back and go back through them all to vote on them at some point either later tonight or on Monday. Okay? So with that, if you'll turn over with me, you'll see the heading that says instructional priorities still to review. Yep? So you'll remember that we stopped when Ms. Owen had said, "The next two items we're going to talk about are the library items, and I want to put my two cents in because I won't be here for the next meeting." So that's where we're picking up, right after that. So this is a good example where we took a stab at trying to address this issue that the board brought forward. And you'll see that all of these are numbered, so we won't have any confusion about what we're talking about. Over which is line item on the far left, this is number 29. So we're looking at line item number 29. Testing coordinator and school counselors. We said we would pile two middle school and two high school. Those would still be determined by superintendent and instruction, but it would be a pilot to see if that would make any difference. And if so, of course, we want to use best practice and expand. So that was the assumption that we used with this one to try to put a budgetary amount with this. The item number 30, a school board priority for one-to-one technology, the assumption with that is this would be a student laptop initiative. There was enough information to determine would the students take them home or not. If this was a one-to-one initiative that middle and high school students would take home, including the security and support, it would be approximately $3 million a year. support, it would be approximately three million dollars a year on a four-year lease. And that cost would be ongoing. In theory, if you changed your instructional delivery to a one-to-one digital platform, that would become a three-million-dollar price tag every year. The units, the units and the support would be replaced every four years. Ms. Chair.
Question. Sprint?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're talking about laptops for middle schools and high schools?
Or Chromebooks, some device, yes.
So how does a Sprint device, I mean, I know that has no utilization for classroom instruction?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a possibility, or has that been looked into?
It certainly could be looked into. That device on purpose is not used for instructional delivery in the schools. On purpose, that's not what it's for. It's for students to gain access to the internet at home. So it is not an instructional device. The device to deliver instruction would have to be much more robust, and that's what's been priced here.
Right, so I understand that, but I guess I was asking one question to see if that number could be reduced, if we already have students with that, with the tablet from Sprint. I mean, because I, I would have thought that that could have, should have been the purpose. I understand the use for, you know, having access to the internet.
I certainly understand your question. That, and I don't want to say, no, it's not a possibility. That particular device is not for that. That doesn't mean that some other device, like a Chromebook, which is a very, it's not a very robust device. So everything sits in the cloud. Nothing sits on the device itself. That certainly is a consideration. But that discussion really would come much more of an instructional alignment as we, as we move forward over the next three to six to nine to twelve months. This is simply a price of what the market at this moment, to put an instructional tool into a child's hands, that we can support and we can make sure it's secure, and our teachers can deliver a consistent platform of instruction. That's the price tag for this.
But this will also have access to the internet?
Oh, of course. Yes, ma'am.
Right.
If they have it at home, that's correct.
Ahead of myself to say, but I think it's great for high schoolers as well as middle schoolers, and this is the day and time, to have that technology. My concern is, it's not a model of this line item, but professional development for teachers.
Yes.
That's, when we get to that, I hope that's in place for all the teachers doing high because that's, that really needs to be addressed. I was speaking with people from other counties that have their, yeah, have to have that professional development. Otherwise, children are pretty much on their own.
Thank you. Having lived this in two other school divisions, as you know...
Right, that's right. I forgot that, yes. You already know, yes.
The worst mistake you can make is handing a device out and not, not having your curriculum ready and your professional development done. Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Myers calling in on your experience in other school divisions. The price tag for the one-to-one technology, with other school divisions, does it come out of their general fund totally, or is it some type of grant initiative?
Mostly, it's the general fund. However, we received some funding from the state through the Virginia Public School Authority, give or take twenty-six thousand dollars per year per school. And there is some additional funding that could be available. So, I'm going to say, all of this wouldn't have to come out of the general fund, but by and large, it is. Richmond being unique, I would certainly think that we would have some partners who would want to help us, even if it was simply just security for the network, for the students to be able to take these devices home. I would certainly think we would be able to generate some partnerships.
And since we talked about Sprint initiative, a little off, I just wanted to know, if anyone could address this today, because I don't recall getting an update on the status of that, have all of the devices been distributed?
I can give you an update right now, but I'll certainly give you one in writing, try to give you a twenty-second update. No, they have not. We had our public meetings. We had a very small number of families that were interested. We, we only distributed out of the eleven-hundred-and-fifty devices, we only distributed about two hundred and fifty. There just wasn't interest. We did have, thank you to one of our board members, we did have a group come forward that Sprint said that we could work with this group. These are students, but it was a support group, that we're working with that group to get more parents involved. So we expanded the distribution to the tenth grade and the ninth grade. We've also told Sprint that we are interested in continuing this program because you've committed to it. But the parents have not embraced this to this point. I certainly can give you a report of all the totals.
Mr. Myers, so I see that we don't have a, any FTEs assigned to this, this line item. Do we expect that our staff is, is ready to handle a distribution of this size? And is, I guess, would support be bundled in? I think you mentioned support would be bundled in. Does that include distribution and things of that nature?
I'm going to yield to our superintendent for a moment, if that's okay.
Sure. I think I'm mic, so I'm good. I would submit that this three-million-dollar number vastly underestimates the cost of implementing a one-to-one program, both because of the professional development issue that Board Member Burke raised, and as well as the issue you're raising now in terms of implementation. Having experienced this process and studied it in other systems, I would submit that this is not the biggest lever for us at this moment in time, nor are we necessarily prepared for this coming school year to execute well on this. I want to be clear, I am an ardent supporter of tech in the classroom, but we just have to do it well and appropriately. And I think there are other levers that we need to invest in before we take this step. And so, I would caution the board to consider that experience and understand that if this was a direction the board wanted to go in, I think the actual cost is actually significantly larger.
Just a couple of notes. I know we're going to talk about this later, but there's one-to-one devices, but then there's also just having enough laptop carts for SOL testing, classroom instruction, et cetera. I feel, at least from my district, but I would assume that it's across the, across the city, that we are grossly under-equipped with laptop carts. So, perhaps as a happy medium for next year, we could figure out how to get some more laptop carts in our schools. It really troubles me, for example, that students are sitting for four or five hours taking SOLs because they can't leave the room because there's a limited number of laptop carts. Second thing is, I would, you know, certainly defer to the superintendent as it relates to one-to-one device initiatives. I do think there are some state resources that we perhaps maybe haven't taken advantage of, that I would encourage us to look into. And then, lastly, as it relates to Sprint, I feel like my parents would be really interested in those devices, and I would assume, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but again, I would assume that perhaps maybe we should revisit our publicity as it relates to publicizing this plan, because I don't, I wasn't even aware, I mean, I know it wasn't rolled out in my district first, but I wasn't aware that there was even a publicity plan as it relates to this, so.
And I just want to say, I would welcome the additional, the additional laptops to alleviate the pain that Board Member Dorr has raised. So, absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
As to the Sprint initiative, I definitely think we need to revisit the publicity piece, but also we need to revisit just the whole plan. Because if only two hundred parents, or we only had two hundred parents or students interested in this initiative, we need to go back to the table, see how we can strengthen their partnership to leverage some funding and something. For a minute, what Mrs. Dorr was just saying regarding the laptop carts, I thought you didn't have that earlier.
It is. It's, when we go back to discuss these priorities, these are just new priorities we haven't discussed yet.
Okay, all right. Because that's something that we need ASAP. I just...
Continuing on to item thirty-one, this was a request for additional athletics and arts. I think this was similar to a discussion that occurred last year. So, we looked at, we looked at the proposal from last year. That's what this is. This provides the four FTEs for the arts programs, coaching stipends specifically for middle schools and official, official fees and supplies and equipment. So this is, this is a proposal that the board had seen from last year. And if the board has a different direction with this, certainly we just need your guidance.
So, Ms. Myers, I think we were under the impression, so I know VAN was supposed to, they were supposed to rotate, that was a hundred and fifty thousand, rotate each year?
Yes, ma'am.
And the same thing was supposed to have been for athletics?
No, no, ma'am. That...
Well, one of the high schools said that they were getting funding for athletics, and they were rotating school to school, so...
They're not. That's in the packet. That's, that's the last page behind this. That was a proposal in the FY sixteen budget that did not get funded. And if you'd like to go to that page, we can go to that now, if we'd like to have that conversation. If you put that probably file number eight up on the screen. So you'll see, right behind the legal size pages, you'll see a one-pager, and you can just read it on the screen. This was a question that I had received, and this was my response. The five comprehensive high schools each receive eighty thousand dollars for coaching supplements and eight thousand dollars for security supplements. Franklin only receives ten. The schools receive no additional athletic funding, other than the hundred-dollar central allocation that they receive. And that's page two. It's on the back of what's in your packet. You scroll down to that next page. So, so for example, let's just look at, take any Armstrong High School. You'll see has nine hundred and twenty-seven students. This is our September thirtieth count. They get a hundred dollars for every student. That's ninety-two thousand seven hundred. They get two hundred dollars for every special ed stu, another, I'm sorry, another hundred dollars for every special ed student. So, in essence, two hundred dollars for the special ed students. So the allocation for Armstrong, for whatever the principal wants to purchase, whether that's athletic equipment, whether it is instructional materials that aren't purchased centrally, postage, there's about five or six or seven categories of budgets that they have the authority to allocate that hundred, in Armstrong's case, hundred and forty thousand dollars. This allocation is done a variety of different ways, depending on the school division. Some allocate two dollars for art and a dollar seventy-five for music, and ultimately, it all, generally, it all comes back to a per-student allocation. This one is a simpler allocation. You may remember last year in our budget discussion, I compared our high schools to Henrico and Chesterfield's allocation. This allocation is greater per student for our high schools, as you would think it should be, because they're going to bring in more money through their activity funds, by and large, through gate receipts and other, other resources than, than our schools do. This is a regionally very competitive allocation. It doesn't mean that it's enough. But back to athletics, this would be the only other pot of money that they would be, that someone would be sharing with you that they're receiving athletic dollars. This is the principal's allocation of this funding for athletics.
So this money is being allocated to athletics and extracurricular activities, correct?
Whatever they would like to support. Now, now, they're not paying for after-school tutoring. They're not, they're not paying for coaching supplements out of this. Now, they would be paying for VHSL activities out of this. So, if they had to pay for referee or officials' fees, they would have to pay that out of that allocation.
So this is not a true allocation for athletics?
Oh, no. No, this is the whole school. This is, this is everything that they get that doesn't support staffing. And Ms. works very familiar with this allocation.
Right, it's very different for high schools.
It does. Very different for high schools. But, but it is the same for everybody. It's a hundred dollars for every regular ed student and another hundred dollars for every special ed student.
Some, I'm trying to make it clear by hand. So, a hundred and forty thousand dollars went to Armstrong for athletics.
No, ma'am. If they wanted to use some of that for athletics, they would have to take it out of the hundred and forty thousand. My remembrance is Armstrong allocates about fifty thousand of the hundred and forty thousand to support athletics every year.
Okay.
That's what, that's what Mr. Dr. Bell is doing at this moment.
Exactly.
Undiscovered discretion. Yes, ma'am.
Exactly. So, the point is, we're setting our kids up to fail, because we are not providing them the support, the financial support, to be able to compete and level on a, you know, level of the playing field. And this is unacceptable. You know, we need to have a, and I know this is a, another discussion, but we need to have a vision for athletics. Yeah, athletics, arts, because our kids, they have to have those experiences, and we're not providing that.
This amount of money, the hundred and forty, the principal would say, "I'm going to use fifty thousand for athletics. I'm going to use so much for the arts."
For arts, yes, for music, and that likely would be, what they likely do, what most of them do, and what most, what schools would allocate to the teachers in those, in those disciplines, they would say, "I'm going to allocate this much to you," and then that money would be spent on those programs.
So, it is for programming. This would not cover FTEs?
Oh, no. It would not cover FTEs. No, ma'am. That's right.
So, as we think forward in the strategic plan, one of the things we ought to consider, for example, is should, and I want to be clear for the public and for the press, that this is not an actual proposal. I'm merely expressing a hypothetical. But if we wanted to say, "Every RPS student will participate in orchestra," we could fund that as a clear line item with FTEs, instruments, and so on and so forth, as a commitment to our students. This, as I understand it, and my own knowledge is still developing, is an allocation based per student, and it is then up to the principal to use as they see fit to meet the needs of their school.
Yes.
Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Great. My only comment on this, I'm certainly supportive of the board's intention to add additional funds here, is to add a further equity lens on this. So we have certainly increased it for special education students, but I would offer to the board, does it make sense to have a further differentiator, for example, for schools who are in a non-accredited status, or who are serving our highest populations of students in poverty, as distinct from those who are serving students who are not?
All right. Looking at the elementary level, I think the amount has changed much, much in the last four years. It's not the same.
I don't believe, I don't believe the hundred dollars has changed. It's certainly in the two years that I've been, been back here.
Okay, it's fewer students, too. Okay. Looking at the high school piece, this, let's say Armstrong, a hundred and forty thousand, that's everything from, without any additional costs. This is just for the arts and athletics. This, let's say Armstrong, a hundred and forty thousand, that's everything from, without any additional, this is just for the arts and athletics, or instructional budget overall.
Instructional materials.
Alright, so that could be everything from, just as it is in elementary, books for the library, stuff, it's not supplemental materials.
There there's a central allocation for for the library books, clearly it's only two hundred as we talked last week, only two hundred thousand, so that's not not gonna replace.
Anything else I would want to order as a school principal, so this one hundred and forty thousand is is all Dr. Bell's overall budget, including the athletic program? Does that also include Virginia High School, these membership?
It it would, sometimes they they use that eighty thousand dollars of coaching supplements to pay for that also, but we don't, we don't restrict them if that's what they do, but. Uh, but yes, it would include V H S L payments.
I don't know where exactly, I understand what Ms. Page is is stating, as a parent of two high schoolers that participated. If it had not been for the parents and the band boosters and athlete boosters, uh, a lot of activities would not have taken place for a lot of children, period. So if there is a way in which we can increase those amounts, because our our young people don't have the, even their uniforms sometimes, or the. Um, the the uh, rooms, athletic rooms are not up to par, I've seen it, some schools they are, and some schools they aren't, which must go back to the equity piece, okay, okay. So it's most unfortunate when when we see some children, some young people have the opportunity to have better opportunities to practice, some don't have opportunity. Why, why don't, and I'm not asking you that, I know why, so if there is another way in which we can take dollars from here, or put them there, or. This opportunity, this is all part of the high school experience, and our our students are not getting, it needs to be stepped up. We're struggling, we need to get out of that mindset. So at some point, I don't, I'm not asking you to find the magic, whatever, but we as a board really need to look at that, because if you look at the the where our students are practicing. Their locker rooms, it's, it could be clean, but it's it's not up to par, it's not up to par at all. It's it's really, when they go to the other schools, which are newer, I guess, maybe that would be probably only high school in our area that has, well, otherwise, you know what I'm saying? But we're not, we're not up to par with the bad uniforms and our children are. They, and they come back with the trophies, but it's the same few people, and we're not, we need to do a little bit more to help with those teachers and those children that want to be a part of. And right now it's being done because of boosters.
With all due respect, uh, if we could look at uh, T J, it, I'm not sure if it's the math, or maybe I'm missing something. But the numbers don't seem to add up to, for it to equal one eighty-one, when there's so much less students.
They've got the I V program there, so they have an allocation for that.
A hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand worth?
I don't think it's exact, I thought it was, I thought it was like eighty or eighty-five, but.
You back into it?
Do you remember the exact allocation?
If you can back into it.
Hundred, okay. So anyway, that's the I V allocations in that number.
Is that, there's a differential in a couple of them, is that because of specialty programs?
Uh, off the top of my head, that's the only one that I specifically remember. Um, open probably doesn't, it does, I was gonna say open didn't calculate out exactly right, but it does.
Is there a specialty uh, program going at Armstrong?
I don't think so, does that not, does that not add up?
It'll end up being one twenty-five.
Fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand. Fifteen thousand for the band uniforms. Every, once every five years, the school, the five comprehensive schools get a hundred thousand, and then the other four years they get fifteen thousand. That's included.
So, um, the the current, the question that the administration has been so far includes an additional fifty dollars per student.
It does.
And that's not included in it.
It is not.
These numbers already will rise based on what the current calculation is.
If you approve it, yes ma'am.
Um, so that's what we consider, um, and so, but I I do think that, um, it it may be worth, um, having Mr. Cameras take a look at the F T E allocation. And making a recommendation about that to, um, to address that goal line item specific to, uh, this one, line number thirty-one that we're talking about. Um, but it, and then addressing what, um, Ms. Burke has noted, there is also maintenance, which is a separate piece too. And so, um, you know, our our maintenance needs are so above and beyond, um, what anyone, people to to address, you know. But I I wonder if, given the fact that, you know, athletics is seen as something that is a nice to have, then it will never happen, if we continue to think of it as a nice to have. So perhaps we look at maintenance that is specifically allocated towards the athletic facilities to ensure that, um, it doesn't keep getting, you know, pushed aside.
And so I was just gonna ask the question because Ms. Owens and I were talking about this, well, what legally, well, right now we can advertise, we can accept, um, advertising in our school buses, right?
I think it still actually has to finalize, it's passing through the assembly, but I think it, I believe it's cleared all the committees, and I think that it is clear, don't look to, Canita. Who, it's still in the senate, okay.
Would the state rule apply to our facility, I mean, not facility, I'm sorry, our, our.
We, we. We absolutely can partner with folks, um, you know, over the years, one of the, one of the, one of the best ways was to to get Pepsi and Coke to buy scoreboards for schools. Um, but certainly all the banners that you see that are around football fields and such. But you, but but we can, that would be part, we would have a partnership agreement that would outline what our responsibilities are, and what our partners' responsibilities are. Um, that is certainly available to us.
So I have a comment after this tour about regarding the advertising, the sponsorship.
Go ahead, cause I'm, Ms. Page, you can go first, cause mine's not on the topic of advertising, if you want to continue the discussion.
So, yes, this can take place, but we do not have. We do not have people in place with a vision to, um, to really attract. That type of, um, to create that type of funding, because it can happen, and you see it in our surrounding localities with the sponsorships. Um, companies would sponsor the scoreboard and have their name listed, but we have to have individuals in place with a vision. To grow athletics, the arts, we have, we have to have a vision, and we don't have that right now.
As we consider the additional allocation, um, per school for.
So, sorry, we're getting some legal advice, and we would have to do some policy work.
Oh. Um, as we consider the additional allocation, adding an additional allotment per school, which I'm in support of, and I'm, um, very in support of giving principals more autonomy and how they spend their money. One quick question though, um, is the, the, my understanding is that the dollar allotment is intended to also cover things like supplies, is that correct? So I I worry a little bit about, um, I just think we need to think through, I'm in support of it, generally. I think we need to think through a little bit of how, um, how it's administered, you know, potentially with an equity lens, but also, the number one thing that I hear from teachers is that they. Um, are frustrated with a paper allowance, um, because they feel they're, they only get a certain amount of paper per year. Um, and that's because there's sort of scarcity in their hundred dollar allotment, et cetera, so, um, it seems ridiculous to me that teachers have to bring their paper to the copy machine. Every single time that they want to make a copy, um, so, um, I know it's not a policy, but it is an informal policy at a lot of, um, schools. And it's just one sort of maybe unintended consequence of this kind of program, so, um, I guess I just. If we're gonna increase the allotment, which I'm in support of, I would just encourage us as a, I would love to just, if it's the will of the board, sort of ask that we make sure that we think through exactly how we create a culture where. Teachers don't have to feel scared about, you know, asking for more paper, um, et cetera.
Not to, not to prolong this conversation, but, but I will share something that I think is important for us all to understand. To to some extent with what you're specifically talking about, um, this is, this is less of a resource issue than it is a a coordination, leverage, training issue. There there are, um, significant funds left each year that are unspent, although we we try every single year to help the principals. Um, we could certainly have a central paper budget, we could do that, um, but probably we want the principal to know how to run their building. Um, so, the leverage piece though, we're talking about the the general fund, there there are other resources that go to the schools. Title one is the big one, school improvement, which is an arm of title one, is another big one. Um, leveraging those dollars frees up these general fund dollars to do other things. So I just want us all to know that while, yes, we're talking about resources and there are needs, there's no question about that. Some of this issue is making sure that our principals have appropriate training, that they have the support they need, um, and they know how to actually use their dollars. Um, and I know we've done some of that, and Ms. Burke never had any problems spending her money, so, but anyway, I did want to prolong it, so, um. Ms. Superintendent.
Sure, Paige. Um, I'm just noting the time, and I don't necessarily have the answer to my question, but I'm wondering if we need a, a different process? Given that we have, I think, discussed three items. Um, and I'm, I certainly want to explore all of these, uh, but if we are going to conclude at eight this evening, and then we have one additional two-hour session on Monday, the nineteenth. I'm not sure that we're equipped or set up for success on this, and so, I I'm certainly open to other ideas, uh, and the will of the board, I just want to make sure we.
I I have a thought about process, um, and, you know, as we've been going through the budget, there are certain, um, large initiatives, big picture initiatives that it seems like are running, running themes. And, um, the things that I've noted thus far, you know, is, um, uh, English language learner support of some type, who's, you know, could be thinking that up a bit more. Discipline, which could include, um, you know, restorative justice, and, you know, all of that stuff buckets together. Um, nurses, I say that, that was my thing, but I I think it's important. Um, the the transportation is another thing I know, again, I mean, I got another call about it today. Um, and I do think that 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 salary and the number of the bus drivers is 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 kind of low hanging fruit in terms of something to be addressed. And then, um, another bucket is the school, I don't know, I call it kind of school student support stuff, which is, um, you know, as we've been talking about, uh, you know, either more school psychologists. Or, um, folks to support our our school counselors in some way. Um, and then, um, and then also, as we talk about the budget, there is also the kind of ongoing cost stuff, and then there's the, um, one-time thing that are more materials-based. So, um, which we could potentially pull from, um, you know, uh, kind of that.
Fund balance.
Yes, fund balance, thank you, so, um, and things that could fall into that could be the, you know, kind of dealing with maintenance and and athletics and, um, uh, you know, some some technology things and things like that. So perhaps if we kind of agree in this meeting on what those big picture initiatives are, um, and then figure out a way to, uh, put put dollar lines to to those. Yes, and I'm not suggesting, I mean, that's just sort of as I've been listening to what I think seems to be rising top of the bucket.
No, I'm just saying, I think that's a fairly, um, accurate assessment, so Mr. Myers, on that front sheet, the first sheet that you presented.
Yes ma'am.
The salaries and benefits, and the staffing. You know, I just wanna say, I think there appears to be consensus around top two. Consensus, yeah, top two, second salaries and benefits and staffing.
But this, we don't have the bilingual, all the bilingual people we needed instead.
I I may offer the suggestion, if it helps, we certainly want to continue to work through all of these that you do. Um, we have our superintendent on board, um, listening to you tonight, um, the administration can, uh, put together, um, some suggestion about these, uh, higher priority items. Um, and bring that to you on Monday, uh, for your consideration.
It is, and we were supposed to, or we're prepared to talk about transportation tonight.
It's on, it's on, it's on for tonight.
So maybe we should just skip to that at this point.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you so very much, but I'd like to know for District Seven.
What line item number?
Um, you can go from forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six.
Yes ma'am.
Forty-seven, everything is professional development will be coordinated with the state through the collective action plan, does that mean they have to be a group?
This is a difficult area to to quantify, and certainly we can bring our instructional folks. One of the areas that we have specifically been directed with the state is to coordinate our professional development activities. Um, the way that that is being coordinated is all of our central professional development is being coordinated through the state. If for some reason, and I know you probably did this occasionally in your school, you took some of your allocation and maybe you invited a motivational speaker to do something. That is not, but that's not true professional development, so when these have been, these have been blocked out. I believe, um, that these are not individual line items that can be addressed at this moment. Um, our superintendent is is going to make sure that our professional development is aligned to our instructional plan, and that will also have to be coordinated with the state. So this is an important, maybe as important as anything we're gonna talk about, but the reason we blocked that was because this is not a specific line item discussion that we can determine at this moment.
Alright, another question, because everything listed here, in going to the seven schools, these are, these are suggestions, suggestions that the principals and the teachers ask.
Yes ma'am.
So, there's one other item on here, the international faculty award, that would follow the state as well.
What, what line item?
That's line item forty-one, I know that's professional development, but that's, that should be ongoing, it is required, because we only have money for staffing in the, for that position.
Mrs. Oakley is raising her hand to offer some insight.
We only have to get approval from the state if it's a new initiative, so the I V program is not a new initiative, so training funds. So training funds can be allocated for training of the teachers at Shimerazo or anyone else that needs IB training.
Excellent, so the training for the reading and literacy math is not anything new to the current program?
So I do know the principal that put that in, and I can assure you that we've been over there and we've been providing reading and math training at that school.
I don't know, I guess we'll talk afterwards, because I have, I have about three principals that share that. So it was more than just, just one?
It depends exactly what reading and math training they want. It must be aligned, and it must meet with the materials that we're currently using. If it was a new program.
That's what they've been asking, they weren't asking for anything new.
You can, you can let me know and I'll.
Okay, all right, they weren't asking for anything new, it's what's already in place. They asked for more professional development. I just didn't understand, and still don't technically, but I have to receive what you're saying, in terms of knowing that people need this professional development, that it has to be approved twice under the state, but it's not a new program. The only thing that we knew here would be the Ruby Pain Model. And Love and Logic was just used at one elementary school. Those two would be new, but that's not a speaker coming in, that would be ongoing. But everything else listed here, including STEM initiatives, that has to be approved by the state level education.
Well, certainly we'll look to Ms. Oakley, but yes, ma'am.
STEM initiatives would be new.
Yes, ma'am.
In the past, and it has, it would have to be approved by the state, yes, ma'am.
But is it new?
If it, I don't know what school asks for that or what they're trying to do, but if I know what they are, then I can move forward.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Superintendent Kambers.
Sure. Just to build off of Board Member Gibson's proposal, I'd like to offer a, a slightly amended version. So I have heard both from the board and from, it's now twelve school visits, in the, in the short time I've been on board, a clear need for greater supports for our Spanish speaking community. So I think that must be one of our priorities for this budget. I think we have a, a good amount in the budget as, as Mr. Myers shared, but that's certainly worth further discussion. And I'm glad to go back and work with Mr. Myers to look at that a little bit more closely. I think the second area that I've heard a great deal of need, and so much so that it's, it's in my hundred day plan, and I've heard it from you and from schools, is around supporting schools to help deal with the trauma that their, many of their students are facing in their lives. And that's certainly a complex issue, but we can begin down that path. I've already publicly stated that we'll be launching a task force to think through what the professional development for teachers could look like over a sustained period of time, and if we put some resources against that as well, I think it puts us in a position to execute at a high level on that. And I think that would have tremendous benefit for our students and make the job a little bit more sustainable for our teachers and principals as well. A third area that I think we're hearing a lot of energy around, certainly from the discussion this evening and also at schools, is making sure, and I, I don't have the exact number or manifestation of this, but making sure that there is equity in offerings of enrichment type programs, whether that's athletics or arts. And obviously, the, the price tag on that is, is, could be astronomical, but I think we can identify some priorities to begin to ensure that all of our kids across RPS have access to the kinds of enriching experiences that many of us enjoyed when we went to school and that, for some kids, is the reason they come to school. And then a fourth is transportation. It seems to me that that is an issue which has, I've seen it myself. Now that I've been out at schools, kids not able to get to school on time and all sorts of other complications related to that. It's obviously a much bigger issue, which is related to facilities and zoning and lots of other things. But there might be some incremental changes that we can put in the budget to alleviate some of that pressure on schools, which would certainly help our students and their families and our schools try to meet the goals that they have. So I propose those as four priority areas for the budget going into this, this coming school year, with, again, the knowledge that we are going to create a strategic plan over the next couple of months, which will drive much more significant budget decisions going into the following school year. And, and also I am, if we can reach consensus on priority areas this evening, I would be delighted to work with Mr. Myers to put together a concrete proposal, building on what he has already prepared for those four areas. For review on Monday.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kambers, for, for that, for putting it all together. I just want to make sure that when we talk about trauma informed care, that it's just not, we're talking about trauma informed care with professional development, that we look at it more holistically when we talk about food, climate and culture, which includes trauma informed care initiatives. Because we do have to, the trauma informed care piece is also the alternative to suspension piece. It's, 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 it's pretty broad. So I, I would like to put that, school, climate and culture, including, or making sure, you know, trauma informed care is a, is a central part of that, one. And then second, I would also like to add, too, you talk about transportation and, but we also have issues, transportation, one. And second, we have issues with being able to maintain our buildings and the cleanliness of our buildings. We do not have the appropriate level of custodian at all of our buildings. So I think that's very important as well. That's what I would like to do.
Thank you, Mr. Kambers. Spanish speaking students, trauma, enrichment, transportation. I agree with Mrs. Cosby in regards to the maintenance piece. I think that's one reason why many of our schools are in the shape of they're in, that we do need to address, that's most important, which goes back to culture as well, as we well know. But I would like to see, or maybe it's sort of being addressed, knowing that we have so many schools that's been denied accreditation, that one of the major goals, and maybe it's here and I'm not seeing it, but with the items that's listed, that student achievement, maybe to, or maybe just concentrating with reading and math, something to address the reading, excuse me, the student achievement piece, because that is our number one goal. So can we include that as one of our five or six goals as well, or that, that's already addressed?
I, I will certainly welcome additional funding to support reading and math. I, I want to be thoughtful though about taking the time to do my own due diligence on our instructional program and to be thoughtful about potentially reallocating current funds in a way that can potentially maximize our instructional program. But I, of course, would welcome if it was the will of the board to provide additional investments in those areas, as long as we have the time to think very carefully about how we use them, that's all.
Thank you. So there are, I think this is a, a great list that we've started. With regard to the equity and enrichment program.
It's getting longer.
It is, yeah. Well, we, we don't have a hard time identifying needs in our district, but did you view technology under equity and enrichment? Or would you, I, I think that there's, whether it's laptop carts or one-to-one tech or, you know, other, other thoughts, it certainly seems that there, there's, there's needs there. So, so that's one thing. And then I would like to encourage more discussion about nurses and health services in our schools. So I hope to see something going to that.
And I was just winging it in on the technology as being one of the big ones to consider. So I don't, I don't know if they all fit together, but I don't think we need all of the things that are in here under technology. So I think, again, if you all especially work on the ones that seem to be the most dire need, like laptop carts for SOL testing, seems like that's definitely a strong, more important need, say, than robotic materials, you know. So as you two work on that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just wanted to bring here, I, I wanted to bring your thoughts in terms of ensuring that we are thinking big picture, so that trauma included is part of that overall climate and culture piece. And, and then also this is a, whatever language thing, but I think, I just want to make sure that rather than talking about Spanish speaking students that we're thinking more broadly about Spanish language learners, it was a learning for me to appreciate that. Many of our English language learners don't speak Spanish and their families don't speak Spanish. And so, and so the, the, you know, yes, we want to get more bilingual folks in there, but our, our challenges are broader than that, to really be able to meet the needs of all the students and families within the district.
Okay, so in bio trial, can you move towards transportation? Do we have the structure for our top seven?
Can you repeat the seven that you have, just to make sure I know that we're on the same page?
I have.
Youth support, transportation, the trauma informed care, which includes caution, climate, alternative to suspension.
Would you say that, would you repeat that in the microphone? School climate and culture. To include trauma informed care. And alternative to suspension programs, okay.
And then there was one, which includes athletics, arts and class offering. And then support staff, custodians, et cetera. Nurses, psychologists, social workers. And tech staff, and. And health support. Okay, so it's right, we're moving to transportation.
Yeah, ma'am. I will share that in the order of, of tonight, the two, the two realignment plans are in order next. But, but I'm, I want, I want to follow the chair superintendent's lead. We certainly can move to the last two items, and next to the last item is transportation. Madam.
I would, yeah, thank you. I, thank you. If my colleagues would indulge me, we've spent a lot of time talking about proposed new spending. I'd like to think perhaps I'm here to provide some balance and like, like to propose some efficiencies. And there too, would welcome the opportunity to have a conversation relevant to prioritize. Let me, you know, so efficiencies cuts, I've identified a number of, number of cuts, but not cuts for the purpose of just cutting, but rather to spend, spend the scarce resource, i.e. our dollars, in the highest, the most effective use. And if it's, if it's the will of the group, I'd love to at least convey an opportunity, I think, to first address something that I think we would all, all agree with. And that regards, a conversation we've had this evening, specifically professional development. Candidly, one of, one of the most frequent critiques of RPS pertinent to our teachers, and what I hear from our teachers, regards our professional development and how disappointed they are with candidly being treated, treated like something less than what they are, which is a professional and an adult. And, and so to that end, I've proposed consolidating professional department, professional development department, excuse me, within HR, using those dollars, over six hundred thousand dollars, to, among other things, providing stipends to over two thousand teachers and truly treating our teachers like the professionals that they, they are. And that would, that would constitute, in a few words or less, the, the bulk of the first, the first document or first plan you have. In the second regards, what we as a group regularly say constitutes a priority for us, and that pertains to facilities. And if, if, if I may, just for a moment, if we as a group say that facilities represent, and new bricks and mortar classrooms represent one of our highest priorities for us as a district and for our students and for our teachers, then we have to budget accordingly. And to that end, what I've proposed is seven million dollars a year or something equivalent to two pennies on, on the dollar when you account for our aggregate budget, not just our operations, but you include for our capital, and you include for federal monies that provide for head start, et cetera. But you see the numbers in front of you, it's nearly three dozen FTEs. And I was very intentional about, and I think everybody on, on this board knows that for me philosophically, I have a real objection to, though I'm very fond of all of our, all of our staff downtown, I have a real reservation and objection to what I hear so frequently from our principals and teachers, and specifically that their hands are often tied, their hands are tied by the people downtown. And, and so to that end, any opportunity to reduce our footprint, our FTE footprint downtown, spend less money, specifically over two point three million dollars, and then you have the additional dollars there. Again, I will renew my, my pitch at the risk of beating, beating a dead horse for the purpose of consolidation, two million dollars for schools. And then we're sitting on all this money, we're sitting on this surplus. And if I understand from past conversations with, with our CFO, we should reasonably expect that in any, at the end of any fiscal year, we can anticipate something, and please correct me, David, but something at least conservatively around two million dollars a year in surplus monies. I would propose that we use those dollars for our facilities, because I would remind us all, and I know, I know I don't need to, but we have a seventy-five million dollar gap between what, what city council approved the other evening and what, what this board agreed to the other month. So we can either, we can either whine, we can either whine about that, that, that gap, or we can take it on ourselves, do something about it, and use some of the monies that we're, we're sitting on and use our dollars and, or use the dollars to achieve our highest priority. So, I mean, you know, every, everybody has had what I've put together for a long time. So, and no, because everybody's a professional and adult, they probably, they, they can review that. But, but thanks for indulging me.
So, Mr. Young.
It's on.
Thank you for providing us that information. But I think just to reiterate what the superintendent said, if we would allow him to present, come back on Monday, what they planned, because he did request not to consider the reduction, you know, big ticket items. So I think we need to be mindful of that and also respect that request as our superintendent. So we can move on to transportation, if that's the pleasure of the board.
I just add, as we've all talked about the budget as an iterative process, and so I think. I think, I think my desire would be certainly to make sure that we are exploring how we can be effective with the dollars in our budget and make sure that they are going to our highest priority areas. I'm not confident right now, quite frankly, that they are, but we also are in the process of starting a strategic plan, having a number of community meetings, the equity audit, the budget audit, et cetera. So although I'm very excited about Mr. Camrus, I also know that we're not going to build Rome in a day, so given that we have six days before we have to approve a budget, or five days, six, anyways, and I support all the priorities that we outlined, I guess I would just offer that while I would love to see all these ten items solved and us to have, you know, billions of dollars for our schools, having a little bit of flex, offering Mr. Camrus some flexibility to bring a couple of incremental changes that really could make a difference in one year, and then also kind of wait as we go through the strategic plan to make sure that we're really being effective before we make any kind of budget cut recommendations, but also large scale initiatives. So that's just my perspective.
So again, I would like to remind us as the board to allow the superintendent to bring back his recommendation.
So obviously I defer to the will of the board and to my colleagues, all of whom I respect, but I just want to be real candid and share that we will spend, just this evening alone, it'll be close to two hours talking about proposed new spending and probably three minutes talking about cuts. I think it's really important for the public to know that.
So no, if it's young.
Yes ma'am. I would if we could go to, thank you, that was right on target. The, I had tried to isolate these five items from the board's priorities so we could have a, an efficient and effective discussion about transportation. Mr. Krantz and Mr. Miles are here tonight to talk about budgetary impacts of these items, and I'll ask if you guys will come down and, and work, work with the board with these five items.
Good evening. On eliminating the hub system, what we saved on that was 14 buses, 14 on tier one and four on tier two. To add those 14 buses back, the total cost, including the operating costs, is $386,496. Now, the bigger expense is the acquisition of the buses. So each bus is about $100,000. We have all the special need buses we need, so our regular buses run about $100,000, so that's 1.4 million dollars. Now. Ma'am.
So we eliminated, so we went to a hub system.
And that's what we saved.
Right. And you said, so we saved 14 buses. Do we have those buses before?
We, we, we had buses, but what we did is we retired our older buses with the understanding we were going to get into a bus replacement, so we would need, we would need to acquire those 14 buses. Yes ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Krantz. So from what I recall, when the, when we moved to the hub system, the projected savings were a fair amount higher than, than the.
It was right at about a half a million dollars.
A half a million? Okay.
Because at the end of the day, we only eliminated the 14, you know, even though we did 14 on tier one and four on tier two, it was effectively a 14 reduction is what we were able to reduce.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. On, well, let's go down to threes, we stay kind of on the broader conversations about transportation issues. So one thing that comes up as we try to address, and this is part of two, I guess, the urban school districts and the challenges we have, we have about 3,200 students who we don't provide transportation for because they live inside of a walking zone. And we were concerned that we, if we, by doing door to door for specialty schools, where when the students filled out their applications, it was known that transportation was going to be provided on a limited basis, not door to door, that we then opened the door on all of our student transportation, because we do hear that, you know, from, from families. If we were to do transportation district wide, it would cost us an additional 29 buses, additional buses, and it would cost us an additional 1.2 million dollars a year. Those would cost us 386,496. Oh, that's if you go with the, the students who are in open enrollment that live outside of the school zone and don't go to one of our specialty schools. That'd be district wide. That was the 1.2, is that the one you were thinking of, Ms. Cosby? For hubs, if we brought hubs back in.
Real.
No, the real is that's the, that's the, no, those are outside of hub, so if we get into the students who live out of zone but attend a school within Richmond Public Schools under open enrollment, which is very similar to what we're doing with the specialty schools, that's an additional 3,220 students that potentially would be getting transportation. Assuming that 90% of those students will utilize our buses, which is a fair percentage, that's an additional 1.2 million dollars a year to our budget, plus in addition, that's outside of the hub, that's outside of, these, these are students, for example, that they live on the east end and are attending school at, at, well, Benford is one of our specialty schools, but if they're in TJ, they're not part of the IB program, or if they're going to John Marshall, or if they're going to Eugenon, or if they're going, which we have students from all of our schools going to all of our schools by, you know, the grade categories. So what we, because we hear it from our parents, if we open the door, we're going to open the door to open enroll students, also ask them for transportation. And from a pure equity standpoint, I think it's fair at that point that we offer it to all. And I'm just giving y'all the data on what it was. Now, the challenge on any of this isn't, I mean, I know the dollars a bit, don't get me wrong, so I'm not saying they're not, but the challenge for transportation is hiring drivers. Okay? And we, we talk about that the issue is our wages, and our wages are relatively low, but they're not that low. What, what we see and the reason why we can't find drivers is there's just not enough there between what we're competing for, what the surrounding school systems are competing for, what GRTC is competing for, what Greyhound's competing for, and what the, what the commercial trucking company is competing for. We're all competing for the same individuals, and our needs are greater than the population that we have. And, and honestly, if the money, excuse me, if the money was appropriated and the buses were bought, the challenge we'll have is finding enough drivers. Right now, today, we've lost this year 24 drivers, we've replaced 13, we have another 10 in class as we speak, at different stages of our class program, to get us close to back where we are, but, but our challenge is just having enough drivers every day. When we're out sick and we've averaged anywhere from a low of about five drivers sick to a high of over 30, when we, when we have 30 drivers sick, that creates double backs. There's no way for us to, we can't have a pool, we don't have enough in our surrounding areas now, and that's why we get late. We have 15 double backs that are normal because of the routes we have. And a large portion of the impact to transportation is as we extend our services, that puts a drain on limited resources. Now, I'm all for equity, as Superintendent Camrus eloquently has said since, since the beginning, I'm a big believer, and I think he's exactly right. But I'm just saying the challenge is not so much the money and not so much buying, and I know it's huge, so don't, I don't want anybody thinking I'm not saying that, but it's hiring actual bodies to drive our buses.
So to get us competitive, because you mentioned, you know, so we're not, we're low, but we're not that low, okay, so for us to become more competitive.
We would need, oh, excuse me, excuse me, we, we would need on our contract drivers and sub-drivers to, on, to pay a dollar 26 an hour increase, and our sub-drivers a dollar 87 an hour increase, and then on our monitors, it's a 52 cents an hour increase. Now, on a, not knowing, and I guess I, you know, I was in and out today, so I don't, I compute a guess an annual impact, but I didn't, so I'll gladly provide that at the next meeting, but what we've seen, talking to our drivers and seeing the turnover that we have, and we, Floyd does a tremendous job talking to the other districts and their directors, there's, there's great communication between them, they do a, different regions and they meet on a monthly basis, correct? And, and they have great attendance, and they talk about these issues amongst themselves. Where Richmond, we have a better benefit program, honestly, that's what makes us competitive in a lot of cases, is our costs are a little bit less for the benefit side, so there's some, there's some pluses that we as Richmond bring to the table. But obviously, if we increase our rate, it should help us, instead of being in the hole right now, 11 drivers, I would hope that it would keep us at that 24 number, you know what I'm saying? I don't know, though, if I would find an additional, you know, the additional drivers. It would, it wouldn't hurt, but I think there's just, just a limited number of bodies.
Mr. Krantz, so Richmond City in comparison to, let's say Hampton City or North Public Schools, similar, the urban settings?
We compare to the, and, and the reason why we compare to our surrounding, because that's the population, I'm not going to get a driver.
Yeah, I understand that part.
So.
I'm just trying to get a feel.
We can give you that information, I don't have that in my fingertips.
I was just wondering for a second, not that anybody's believed here.
Oh, yes ma'am, okay. But we can get that for you.
Just trying to figure out the difference, because it's hard being a bus driver. I think, Mr. Miles, it's very hard.
The number one complaint, the number one complaint we've heard this year from our drivers is, and, and we've talked about this during our climate and culture, is the student's behavior on the bus.
Yes.
Okay? But now, it's not always students, and I've, and I've said this, as drivers, and I've got a tremendous driving, group of drivers, I'll go to bat for every single one of them, but we, we as drivers don't understand score. So there's inconsistency in how we apply discipline, not intentionally, but it occurs. And so our students see differences depending on who the driver is that day, and when they go from school to school, it changes. So for us, we need to find a way to get uniformity amongst our drivers on how to apply the discipline, number one. Number two, find a way that we can create an environment in the bus that our students will be students. I'm not saying they're all going to sit there and be nice and quiet, that's not going to happen, my children didn't do that growing up, so why would I expect 50 students on a bus to do that? But we have to find a balance that we understand as drivers and that our students understand. But that's been our biggest issue of why we've lost this year has been student behavior. We pay right now, our drivers are paid at $13.01 per hour, Hanover pays $12.89, Hanover pays at $14.36, Hanover, Goochland pays $19.04, however, they limit it to a four hour day. So you're only driving four hours a day, you can't drive any more than that. We have drivers who actually will make over $85,000 a year. Yes ma'am. On average, on average, we have over 1,200 routes we run every day during the school year. Think about that. That means that bus, when we measure a route from the time I go from the barn, make my pickup, and I come back. So if I have three schools in the morning, that's three routes. I have three schools in the afternoon, that's three routes. Then we do a tremendous amount because we're different than our surrounding neighbors, we have a light in the middle part of the day, which they do too, but in the afternoon, after school, we do after school care, many of them don't. We bring athletics home, many of them do not. And that's where, and on average, out of a 52 week year, on 50 of the 52 weeks, we will have a bus on the highway, buses on the highway on Saturday, and about half of those days, we'll have them on Sunday.
Yeah. Mr. Krantz, I don't know how you're going to solve that one, because that's, that's something that's been there for years in terms of the culture and the, I mean, they can be solved, but that's, and it's more, it's not just the money piece.
I like that idea. I like that idea. Okay, I didn't do that, okay. Maybe the battery, Mr. Cardes, won't bad. It's a tough, it's a tough one. Because it's definitely a need. It's just how do we make it work? But it's a need, I agree with that.
Well, thank you for that, I am looking forward to the annual impact.
Yes ma'am.
And as well as if you can, just because I, I, I'm still not getting my numbers straight.
Okay.
But definitely with the elimination of the hub, the hub system has created a lot of heartburn.
Yes ma'am, yes.
With our system. And, and that would be great, but also I see a year or two, and I don't know if you've explored that, palating a small group of high school students, I'm assuming GRTC.
We've received, we've had numerous conversations with GRTC in the four years that I've been here. The recent conversation we had with their CEO, I saw an email from the city to us tonight that indicated that GRTC was going to be distributing bus passes to our high school students. Now, we need to, we need to find out if there's any more details of that, because in all of our previous conversations, it never was completely just free. Remember, we have about 5,000 high school students in all of our high schools, so we'll have to see what the exact, we didn't get all the details, we just got a blurb in an email tonight.
For Open High, don't they take the buses to where they want to go to Open High?
Open High is the only school we do not provide RPS buses to, so they use public transportation.
Yes, and it seems to work well.
The majority of their parents drive.
No, I'm talking about during the course of the day, in the instance, if you're at open and you need to go to the water, go swimming.
They'll use, they'll use the city.
Yes, they do. So that's, that is something to think about.
Well, we can report to you at the next meeting on what the GRTC exactly details of their need and stuff.
Right, because Mr. Krantz, in the past, it was an issue with the routes and not being able to, or ensure that the students were. and not being able to, or ensure that the students will arrive at their destination on time.
And you're exactly right, even if it's free, the challenge will be is where our students live, the relationship with the bus stops are, and the time they need to get to their location.
So that information will be provided?
We provided GRTC a file of where all our students live, which is what we've done... This is the third time since I've been here we've done that. And every time we've done it, it just...where our students are and where the stops are don't match. And the number-one...I think Floyd will agree with this. Hit me if you don't. Probably the number-one complaint we have in transportation are the hubs with double backs being the number 2. But with the hubs, the problem we have is the amount of distance that children have to walk. And that's the same problem that GRTC has. Because where our students live and relationship to the stop is the same exact principle. Okay? So if we have that problem with hubs, we're going to...and if we did go and say, okay, we'll eliminate all the buses. And remember, the only way we save money is I eliminate the route. That means one bus we take off the highway. That's a challenge because not all of our...you know what I'm saying? When you look at where the students come from, they're probably not all in the same. It's kind of like when you say you're going to do a charter school. I'm just using it for example. And certain...the select number of students leave a school, well, generally, there's not a savings because you still have the same number of classes a lot of times with the same number of teachers. That's the same thing with a bus. If I don't eliminate all the students on that particular bus, I didn't save anything.
Just real fast, really pleased for this conversation because I would love to take all of our high school students off of our buses and put them on GRTC. When I sat down with David, David Green, had this conversation, very exhaustive conversation. He reminded me that they have 1,200 stops...well, they actually have 1,800 stops, but 1,200 in the city. And I think I can say this publicly. He shared that they are prepared and willing to create any stops that...any stops that they currently don't have if it was a will of RPS to collaborate in that regard.
Well... You...okay, if I have 5,000 students, that would create in excess of 15,000 stops, and that's three students per stop. I mean, that's just the pure math.
No, no, I'm not talking about a door-to-door service.
But then you're dealing with the same problem we have with...I mean, I understand where you're coming from that, but you see what I'm saying on the hubs, it's that distance.
I don't think it's a problem.
Okay. I got you.
Well, I find that really interesting, Jonathan, because I know that, you know, when there was the whole discussion about the pulse system and all standing bus routes or whatever, I know in certain areas, there was a lot of upset because the bus routes were consolidated and people had to walk longer. There was an equity issue dealing with that. So that's kind of interesting. And I just, in listening to this conversation, I just want to hear this one more time, Mr. Krantz. The savings, how much did you save going to the hub system?
We estimate we'd save around a half a million. It's coming in right at $386,000.
I just want to hear that again because I just want to hear it again. And one, and I go back, Mr. Young, and I know you have some upset about the conversation not revolving around efficiency so much. And, you know, I do appreciate Mr. Camaras coming in and saying, hey, give me some time, because we have done things to create efficiencies. We've done...we've made cuts out of necessity. And then we find that there are services that we cannot provide. And so when we talk about growing our district, yes, we have to find efficiencies. We also have to look at, you know, where do we want to take this district? Because I don't want this district five years from now to be the district it is today. I want it to be a district of choice. And sometimes with that, yes, create efficiencies, but we're also going to have to invest. And even when we closed schools before, we closed 17 schools, and out of the 17 schools, we had to reopen two or three, and it just doesn't make sense. So I do, when we talk about efficiencies, yes, I don't want to see a lot of duplication. And I think, you know, we do have to look at that centrally. But also, we have to make sure that we are...that we're being smart about it too. So that a year from now and two years from now, it won't bite us if we have to go back and add. Anyway, I just want to give my two cents of thank you. Yours truly before indulging in that.
Madam Chair, I put back up the proposed details as it is right now. And we have seven major items that the board has asked that Monday. We come back with some extended discussion. So we will bring back, if it please the superintendent, something that will be in more of a tabular format, but be prepared to have extended discussion about items that can address those major areas. So that's why I put this back up on the screen.
Okay. Mr. Krantz has left the building. But I...we didn't get to the part about the preschool, because we get money for preschoolers in the chairs. Okay? The state pays for them if they're in the chairs.
That's correct.
And we don't have all those chairs filled in large part because of the hub transportation system.
We do. We've got money available.
That's also a scheduling issue because I know that in my district, there are a lot of schools that don't have sidewalks. So moms can't walk those preschoolers to the schools that they need to get to. They can't drive because they don't have cars, and they can't ride a city bus. So those children are not going pre-K because they can't get to the hub school. And when I said, can a four-year-old ride the bus with a six-year-old to that hub school because the six-year-old is already there, the answer was because of scheduling, we can't do that. So it isn't necessarily just buying more buses or paying more drivers. We may need to just think, how can we resolve the scheduling issue to get those pre-K kids in those seats that the state pays for, and we need those kids in pre-K? So, in addition to just thinking about more buses and more drivers, somebody needs to be thinking creatively about how we can get those babies...I'm sorry, I know it's four. They're not really babies. In those pre-K seats. Thank you.
We certainly will work with the superintendent about the numbers with regard to preschool and those centers and the slots that are still available that we could receive money for. So thank you.
So I just wanted to note, I think, the problems that I hopefully can solve as it pertains to transportation. So, one, I think we need to ensure that the buses show up on time. So we expect our kids to show up to school. We owe them a class that shows up for them. And so, however, you know, looking at the...and I know the challenge varies from district to district, from school to school, but I think first and foremost, it needs to be solved. And buses don't show up on time partly because of overcrowding sometimes and also because somebody doesn't show up. So that's first and foremost. Then I think also that what we can do to reduce the turnover of the buses... I was speaking to a parent today. We talked about, you know, there's a new driver to start around November, and she goes into one of the apartment complexes. The bus driver doesn't kind of do the stops that the other one used to do. And so, whatever the consistency, we just need to have that consistency there. And I think that we...you know, understandably, there are discipline issues on the bus. But as I've spoken to parents, they feel that there's also like the drivers aren't respecting the kids, right? And so my thought is, is if we're able to pay a salary that, you know, is competitive, and I don't know if $4.05 or whatever it is, is enough, right? Like, we want to be able to get the best, you know, folks to be able to be in those seats because our students deserve that and because we know that there are going to be discipline challenges that maybe everybody can't handle, right? So we need to be able to get the cream of the crop.
Yeah, I know we probably all are kind of want to get to celebrating Valentine's Day, but just to build off of Ms. Gibson's point, I guess I would also, and we can table this till Monday, but I'm just curious about, I've heard also that it's just hard to recruit bus drivers. So I think probably salary is a portion of that, but also maybe we need to look at where we're recruiting, how we're recruiting, like, are we working with the Office of Community Wealth Building and the mayor's office? Are we kind of using all of our tools in the toolbox to be effective? Is there kind of a backlog of background checks or, you know, whatever the issue is? Can we solve it? And then is there a way, and maybe the answer is no, but to explore consolidating that position? So having a bus driver do a morning route and then maybe be a lunch shift to offer them sort of more of a full-time schedule or a flexible schedule? I don't know. There's just...can we think about it a little bit differently? And think about our bus drivers as part of the good points that Ms. Gibson made, part of our team, not just as bus drivers, but part of the RPS family?
But is that just an original issue? It's surround, around, it's... Deal with the same issues and trying to find bus drivers. I think there are shortages.
Yes, ma'am.
Trust to fill and write goals, so it's not just an original issue.
Yes, ma'am. That's it for the evening. We will pick back up Monday and come forward with some new information with regard to our major items that the board would like to discuss. And we will...I heard a wonderful phrase this evening. We will try to land this on Monday night with all hearts and minds clear. So we will bring that information to you then.
Okay. Thank you. We are there. We put your hand.
Thank you. I'm going to be sleeping 9:30.